I'll order the Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education regular meeting on June 24th, 2024 at 6:30 PM. This meeting on the Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education is a meeting conducted in public, but is not a meeting of the public. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. The purpose of today's meeting is to conduct regular business that requires action by the board. These items may, with those discussed at previous meetings, are presented to the board for discussion this evening. Call to order and then stamp please stand for the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have the Indigenous point of acknowledgement statement. Mount Pleasant Public Schools is honored to acknowledge the Indigenous people whose tradition and yet we are gathered on today. To recognize the Indigenous people and their ancestral land is our expression of gratitude and appreciation and a way of honoring the Indigenous people who have been living and working on this land since time memorial and whose land on which the Saginaw Chippewa Indian tribe have resided and who have continued to reside on for centuries. We feel it is important to understand the longstanding history of this land and to seek to understand our place within that history. Next, we have the Educational Governance Agreement. As you all remember, we are committed to the following: professionalism, respect, and equity; inclusive collaboration; responsibility to a forward-looking vision; dedication to community engagement; and commitment to continuous growth. If you'd like to further have these, they are, I believe, on the table to my left. Next, we have full call.
Jessica Jergen here.
Amy Bond here.
Melissa R. Wong here.
Nathan Thompson here.
Katie Reed here.
Tim Wodker here.
Next is the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
And that brings us to the superintendent report. Good evening, everyone. First, I just want to acknowledge everyone that we are, this is a rescheduled meeting. Our meeting was originally scheduled on June 17th, so I appreciate everyone adjusting your schedules to be here with us this evening. The first item on my report is an important one. We're going to look at our final budget and then for this year and then move into next year's budget.
I have a new work packet, a slide deck of 23, 24 June budget revision. I'll just mention now too, before I forget, that the official business later on when you actually approve the budget, there's a resolution in the packet that's dated for last Monday, but I do have paper copies that are due for today that will be signed by this board secretary right now, so just so everybody's aware, you will be approving something that's dated in progress. So for the June budget, in January, when we approved the budget, we projected to spend in fund balance just over a million dollars. And we talked about how a lot of that is the tribal grants that we have to carry in our books and we have just about a million dollars in travel grants that we carry over every year. With the adjustments that were made between then and now, we had an increase in state aid, I don't know, of $250,000. It's a lot of different changes. Our property tax change actually went down a little bit. Property taxes and state aid money are tied hand in hand. You look at the foundation allowance times our blooded per pupil count, minus what we get in property taxes is what we actually get in state aid, so they're really tied closely together. We had an increase in our MERSs, which is the state retirement money we get in, Section 51 and Special RDP, Section 22, I'm sure. So there's just a lot of fluctuations up and down. We get millions of dollars in state aid and $250,000 is not much, only the total picture. We had a decrease in budget for salary and benefit expenditures. And this assumes several grants that we received that allowed us to move some salary benefits out of our general fund and into grants that we formed there. So part of this is an IDEA flow group from the Gresham LRC, it's a special life career. So some of our speech social worker people are servicing private school students. The amount of time that they're spending on those students, our RESD is able to give those grant funding to help pay for that time. So we're moving that portion of salary benefits out of general fund and into the grant to help with that. There's a, we received a 27L education compensation over on our state aid. This is to help offset increases in wages this year. So we were able to pull some of our teacher salary benefits out of general fund and into this grant to help offset that. And then the last one is again on our state aid, 22L district transportation cost, which again is to help offset transportation costs. So we were able to pull some of our bus driver salary benefits out of general fund towards this grant. So that makes up that decrease of the budget of $420,000. We added budget of $352,000 for the new tribal grants we received. The tribal grants on our books for this year are May 2023 and November 2023. So we did receive some grant funding in May of '24 also. We put that aside to put it on our books for next year because we really can't spend $300,000 in grants between May and June period. When we purchase things at the end of the year, we need them always even though it's paid before that June period. So so May 2024 are set aside for next year. And then there's a whole bunch of miscellaneous that early on we pulled it out to $2,000. Adjustments to some revenues, some expenditures, facility revenue, way program costs, utilities, subcosts, a whole bunch of things up and down. I don't know if you remember last year, might be able to, we had the budget money for this bid up, which was a gas thing about IT subscriptions. We didn't end up using that because all of our stuff was non-material, it was too small, so I was able to take that budget back out. Whole bunch of things announced, just amounts to $2,000 adjustments. So all now, we're now looking at projecting to spend into fund balance $700,000. That is still with all the tribal grants in there. So I think really when we end up, we hardly, we never spend 100% of our budget and we carry over about a million dollars of travel grants. So we really think we will be contributing back to fund balance at the end of the year. But we have to budget for all of those things just because we can spend them if we have the ability to or the needs to. So we're looking at on paper, projections sent into fund balance, $700,000. If you add that to our ending audit, audited fund balance from '22, '23, that's a projected ending fund balance of 11.2 million, which is a 17.65% fund balance of our total expenditures, which is right stacked up in the middle where it's recommended we stay between 15 and 20%. So this is, this is right on target for that. That's for the June revision. I don't know if there's any questions before I go into New Year.
I can have a question, I was just breaking it down in my head. So with the tribal grants that carry over, I'm familiar that federal and state grants that have carryover guidelines, are there any tribal grant rollover guidelines? And if not, what is our practice with carrying those ones over?
Sure. Currently, we don't have strict guidelines. I know there's new reporting requirement when it's happening now, but internally, we roll everything, it's hard to explain at the end of the fiscal year. We don't get our tribal grants back onto our budget until after audits because we're still paying bills in July and August for this fiscal year. So we don't really know the true ending of those, you know, going around until audit's done. And then everything that's left over, we put back on the books for them to spend for the next fiscal year. Sometimes grants are very old in the original purpose that they wrote them for, it's no longer useful. So we try to work with the administrators or the teacher who wrote the grant on the next best, closest thing and be able to spend it that way.
So when we say older, like how long have we been moving on the tribal grant funds?
We have some from, I think our oldest is 2008. We're trying to get our administrators and teachers and everybody to spend them. We're also trying to be, you know, physically responsible and really try to still hold it close to the original ten and that's like completely going on something that will help the students. We try to be open-minded for that, but we also don't just use it for, it would never be used just for salary benefits or anything like that.
So then your reporting process starts this fall and that is an electronic process where the applications are now also electronic. So that process will be sent back to anyone who was awarded a grant this spring and they will be asked to answer a few simple questions to say, you know, has the grant been spent? If not, why not? And what is the plan, the timeline for spending it? And so basically kind of keeps that checks and balance. And those grant recipients will continue to report on the grant until it is fully spent. And we're not anyone as a district to apply for the next round of grants until everyone who was awarded grants in this last round completes that form. So it is a new process. We do find that folks often will write grants for multiple years. So the intent of the grant is to be spent over a longer period of time. And so I think this new process will pull out for that, but it will also help us tighten up that process. So we're actually getting the funds out to be used in the manner that they were intended. And that's really what we talk about all the time, we need to get moving on this. And sometimes it's a collection of grants that the items that needed to be purchased came in at less money than the original grant was written for, but other times it's just that they haven't gone through all the cycles that they need to spend all the funds.
So just for clarification, these new reporting requirements are the district requirement or the tribe or?
It is a tribe requirement, so it's an electronic form. And again, we won't, we won't be able to submit any new grants until every person who received a grant during this last cycle completes that form. And they'll complete it until the grant is, until it's all processed.
And as I mentioned, there is official resolution paperwork in the board packet earlier when this was approved in the format that the city needs us to approve it. So that, that's all we're never here.
Can I ask a question, it's kind of a transition question?
Absolutely.
You had said that you are able to reallocate a lot of, not a lot, some of our salaries and benefits to be grant specific or grant funded specific?
Correct.
Is that a continuous structure or is that, now that they're grant funded, are they always going to be grant funded or do we move back and forth depending on the flow of grants and monies and all that?
I think I could give you a different answer 50 times for every different grant I have, but it's a flowing process. There are, especially not, not the ones I mentioned now, but like with all of the SRR grants and huge things, when those findings are gone, and the different grants are gone, we keep receiving more grants, but when they're, when they're out on, we will have to probably look at some positions that will have to be gone too if they were added with those extra grant ones. But the majority of what I spoke about tonight, if, when we know what the actual budget will be for next year, would affect our general fund. I did, there's a lot of talk that these would hopefully still be funded for the next fiscal year, so I left them in for next fiscal year, but in the amendment they're gone, these particular ones that I spoke about tonight will go back into general fund. They're just regular teaching and those type of positions that need and had all its hands. Does that help?
Yeah.
So there's another, we'll slide deck. For the '24, '25 New Year budget. This is just in time because these budgets do have to be approved before June 30th, so let me make it clear to you. The first line I was just what I just presented, what we're projecting to spend into fund balance at the end of June. We looked at the foundation allowance increases. Again, we still don't know what our budget will be for next year, even though we have to improve our budget now. The middle of the line was the governor's proposal, was a $241 per pupil foundation increase, and we did budget that into our budget. The House was a little bit lower at 272 and the Senate was a little bit higher at 302. So we took the middle row that seems to be the most likely to pass and budgeted that increase in. That was a $674,000 increase to our revenue. We increased building budgets, cost of everything going up. It was timed, it's been a while since we increased our building budget, so each building has a set dollar amount based on their, their pupil count. We increased that 10%. That was a $175,000 increase to our budget. The carryover line items that is brought back to basics. So certain items of the board obviously carry over. Maintenance and operations was just added last year. There's PSC, the curriculum, testing, those items get a set budget amount every year. And then after audits completed, we know what's left over from the prior year budget. Anything left over gets added into the budget again for the following year. So those were all brought back down. I call it a basic, like PSC has a $50,000 budget every year. Now, after audits down, coming out, she didn't spend this year, we'll add that back into the budget and spend that this year. But that's what, that's what that line is. So right now, there's almost $150,000 line items in excess budget and those few line items that will most likely not be spent, we add it back into the budget after audit next year. And then the miscellaneous increases, I added, we know we have a three-year where we will be going eighteen-year, three-year, or three-year contract with our custodial company. So we know what the increase will be for that year, I added that into the budget. I increased some different things that will be talked about later for, through negotiations with the teacher, even different sub coverages, changes in days, type of thing I added that was in there. Whole bunch of things announced all over the line, I don't want to bore you to death, but it was an increase in our expenditures of $67,000. So that is looking at projected to spend into fund balance, that, that $126,000. Moving forward comes the big thirtors, salary and benefit increases. This again is based on, you know, a ton of, or you mean that we have worked on all year? So there's a salary increase in there, the retirement changes that we know are coming up here is actually increasing for the first time that I can remember in a very long time, but there's an increase. We have a hard cap on how much we're allowed to pay for health insurance, we know that. All of those is announced or included in the salary benefit. That is an increase of our budget of $1.9 million. The athletic participation fees, we know that our SRR grant is going away September 30th, but one of the many great things we've been able to do with that grant is to decrease how much our foster students to pay to play sports. We want to continue that even though the grants go out of the way. So that's a decrease in revenue that the grant's been covering, but will no longer be able to cover about $70,000. And then tribal grants, after audits done, we would add that back to our books. And that currently the budget rate is $2 million, just over $2 million. So that brings us projected to spend into fund balance, pretty much a flat budget, $129,000, which again, we never spend 100% of our budget, so we're looking at another, I'm really contributing back to fiscal, or back to fund balance. This is based on a lot of assumptions. I also use the assumption that a flat student count, we don't have food, we go up and down, we don't know where the foundation allowance will be, we don't know where the grants will be. There's a lot we don't know, but this is our best guess right now.
Can I ask a question now?
Absolutely.
So this is without the SRR dollars, correct? So the SRS is going to be done in September, but this, or would this include that ending in September, but the whole year picture?
So this would, this wouldn't include the remaining SRR grant that we have left to spend, but it also includes the revenue. So SRR would be neutral, bottom line neutral.
Okay.
Revenue and expenditures match each other. Well, that was a lot. Are there other questions? So then the last slide just kind of looks at again our 22, 23 audited ending fund balance, what we just looked at projected to spend into fund balance in June, that's what we're projecting to spend into fund balance for the New Year. That brings us an ending fund balance of just over $11 million as a total of our total expenditures, that's a 17.53% fund balance, which again is right stacked up in the middle for what we.
Did you can you talk a little bit just about the revision process and when we do budgeting?
Absolutely, yeah. So as I probably overly mentioned tonight, we really don't know anything about our next fiscal year, what we're going into, we don't know, what our funding will be, what our cap will be, anything. So we're allowed to amend our budget, we need to amend our budget several times throughout the year. Typically, we do it twice, we do it in January and then we do it again in June. We have so many staff changes between each of those times, like it's a lot of it now, but you can see it really works out to hopefully typically not a huge difference in the bottom line.
Ask that question? So how is the new software that we've been investing in and fighting for, we'll keep it best of our own past couple of years?
It's working great. No, it really is. I'm still fighting with trying to learn the budget piece for the salary and benefit because we have not been live in payroll as long as we have been in finance. So there's still a huge learning curve with that, but it really is, it really is nice. It does way more than we're using it for now, so it's great to continue to learn it. We have local, regional user groups, because our whole RAC is out of town, there are other counties that are on it, so we're all working together and collaborating and learning together.
So is there a thought that we'd be able to do a multi-year projection budget, kind of an idea with that new system? I know that was one of the functions that we were looking at, trying to establish, so I think you know how we were in that process.
Not very far, but there's capabilities. We need to get through the payroll piece first. We had, this was our first year live in payroll and there's a lot of wonkiness, is my technical term for it, so we're learning and growing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So for the participation fees that were projected to cover, are there participation fees or things that are outside of athletics?
There was for fine arts also, for music. Our music posters is outside of the school district. We don't collect any of the money for that, so we were able to pay them for some of those things, but moving forward, it won't be a loss of revenue on our books because we won't, we can't, we don't claim their revenue.
Right, I guess my question is, are we going to extend helping out with participation fees the other way?
We would hope to continue the collaboration with our new structures as well.
It's a slightly in our model, but it's the same intent, right? That we want to support students that are involved and encourage more students to get involved regardless of expenses. So it looks a little different between the two groups, but it's the same idea behind it, that we want to continue to support those students being involved. And that's for students at Mount Pleasant High School and Mount Pleasant Public School.
One last question, sorry, this is kind of my space. So there's a lot of talk about the MERS space and that big shift with actually reducing the, I call it the charge that's levied against the districts because of the health component of MERS is the debt is extinguished, so becoming extinguished. Do you see if that does occur, if that 3%, 4% change is a big impact or is $100,000, which is pennies on the budget, that's 60 sub-million dollars?
Currently, for the main state and our total MERS, there's a whole bunch of different lines, but the item all up, is $5.7 million total. So it would make more of an impact than a small change.
It would be closer to a million, definitely.
Depending on how it all goes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have any other questions about the budget?
I'd like to mention we'll revisit both the current year budget and the new year budget under this case. Thank you.
The next item on my report is our review of policies. I don't know if someone is able to fill in for me this evening and look at our policy chart.
I can do that.
Okay, that'd be great.
No problem. Okay, so we're looking at and starting with 700.
That's okay, that's a long document. Let me know when you're ready, Melissa. Okay. So 5700, there was nothing. 5701, Melissa, you have something to add?
I don't remember it. So it talks about the school or district responsibility for contacting CPS. I wonder if we ever interact with the child version of CPS, which is the ACFS. So should we reapply it in the policy?
That's a good thought. Yeah, we definitely could add that in. Yeah, because we, when we're making child protective reports, we do both, just depending on the student, you know, the family, background, all those kinds of things. So let me, did you, did you have a spot where you thought of it? Or maybe even just, we could just say the district will cooperate with CPS and ACFS and then use both of them out like in that second paragraph?
That's what I was going to say.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions about policy 5701?
So we leaned in, have a question about 5702.
Okay.
So reading for her.
Yes.
It says, I was looking into this policy for a mention of what the school should do when a child gets injured at school besides concussion, which is in a later policy. I didn't find anything. I'm guessing we have something in a handbook for what to do with an injury that happens at school. Do we have injury reports? But I feel like we may want something in this policy. Open to thoughts. And then also underneath it says policy 3403 is about what to have, sorry, I touched it very sensitive. 3403 is about reporting injuries to administrators or parents, but it doesn't say anything about how staff should respond.
Yeah, we definitely have a student injury report process. I spend quite a bit of time reading those reports. So it sounds like maybe she's thinking we would add a paragraph in this policy regarding student injuries. So this is focused on parents reporting an ulcer injury and then a principal saying that a student is, if a principal determines that a student is too ill or too injured to stay in school. Perhaps we could add a, I'm just trying to think where that, maybe at the beginning of C, just says a couple sentences regarding that staff members will fill out the reporting form when a student is injured at school. That suffice? I'll check policy 4303, was the one she referenced also?
34.
I'm sorry, 3403, okay. Any other questions on that one?
Moving on to 5303, medications, Katie, you had a couple of things.
Okay, so 5703.
Oh, I'm sorry, 57.
That's okay, yeah.
Yeah, more of a comment. I think I remember the school nurse, you had said that already reviewed these, but just to be sure that they have, you know, it was very specific, you know, specific.
Right, sure. So what we did last summer, when we initially received all these policies, we gave all of the policies to our area experts. So for example, Jill looked at all of the technology-based policies and Debbie looked at all of the policies that involved anything with regards to school health. So she has reviewed all these policies. She actually, I would say there was probably a primary focus of hers this year, making sure that our policies align with our processes, align with our forms, so that we were, we were consistent, but then also we were able to align, align with what the Michigan School Nurses Association wanted us to do.
Great, I thought that was the case, but.
Yes, of course, check.
And then the other question was, how do teachers and other staff quickly and easily access the emergency care plans for students that's described in C2? Is this indicated on Power School or what's the way they would gather that info?
So on Power School, there is a basic symbol that's the, the red medical symbol that they can click on that will say allergy, inhaler, you know, student-in-class inhaler, those kinds of basic things. At the start of the school year or at the secondary level up, the start of the trimester or semester, teachers are given additional information on that student if the student is in their class. But it's just in Power School, it's just a very basic, just kind of a trigger to say, hey, you should look for more information with them that's given to the teachers if this student is actually in the class. But it's just in, in Power School, it's just a very basic, just kind of a trigger to say, hey, you should look for more information with them. That's given to the teachers if this student is actually in class.
So if there was like a in-classroom incident, they would be able to pull up, you know, what they might be.
They, they would have that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for fifty-seven oh three medications? There are none for fifty-seven oh four student insurance, none for fifty-seven oh five emergency and accidents, none for fifty-seven oh six opioid antagonist. Fifty-seven oh seven, it's school wellness policy. Melissa will start first.
I was just actually after my initials when I agreed that, like, oh, yeah, that's a good question. I'd like to know that as well, but this question actually came from Moleen. Do you want me to read it or?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay. She's asking if the Wellness Committee could present to the board every three-year board review question mark, how do we implement this requirement?
Sure. We could definitely have the Wellness Committee present to the board. I mean, smiling, looking at Ginger because they surround the Wellness Committee. I do not. But we definitely could have them present to the board and we could probably put that on an annual rotation where they're presenting and the Wellness Committee works hand in hand with our food service programs, which our food service programs do report annually. But we could definitely add that to the list of what's happening. Were there other parts to that or is that a great question?
And the docs, Jessica, you have a question on that one as well?
Yeah, I have a couple of, I have a couple of questions. I'm sure we've been over this before, but can you refresh our memory, my memory about who is on the Wellness Committee? We did, and Ginger are on it.
And they work with our food service staff and we have two district wellness coordinators. One is a P E teacher, one is a counselor. So we're, we're really trying to sort of have more of a holistic view of wellness, not just food, exercise, nutrition, you know, taking care of body and mind. We have a.
Deputy Lee, of course.
Yes.
Christopher Lawman says on it, and Jason comes a lot of help from services. Lauren Frost is our high school representative. We've met her at the times at our coordinators. We also have Amanda Boyle, as Jen mentioned, she's a high school counselor and so she's kind of our mental health representative on the committee. And then Amy Schlitt, last year was our head office of fitness part of the Wellness Committee, Ginger and myself. And then Trudy, Trudy from the MSU extension office. She goes, she pushes into a lot of our elementary schools and talks about nutrition and she has really great insights on how to make food enticing and fun. This little, she's really helped us get, we're proficient at the shared food program, where students are like their food and that helped us get the nice cooler baskets going and so.
We have the middle school administrators.
Oh, right. So Julie Wright with us.
Some of the other staff cover the lower L, the high school, we have the middle school.
Thank you very much.
And then the next question.
Oh, you're, go ahead. So the only thing, my comment was this, there's a requirement under A B at the end. It said the superintendent does a need-one-and-every provide notice of office policy and any updates recently built into our systems. That mechanism, which could be the annual report given by the Wellness Committee. But the other thing I thought was interesting is we have to have posted our, our plan, wellness plan on our website. I did not get a chance to go to see that's there or not, but just making some connections to some of the, again, our cycles that we have to manage. We sometimes have boards that we have to present to review stuff.
And a couple more questions. One, there's a little bit about bad debt. I'm wondering if it has any impact on students who be discouraged with unpaid meal charges? Or is this just something we need for like reporting purposes?
So we always try to collect, but for every audit, any bad debt we have on our books or, I'm trying to think of the official term, but inactive students gets right off to Jennifer.
Okay, and it doesn't follow them. And I guess we might already know the answer to this question, but when we're charging for meals, which I know we're not doing right now, do these serve meals to students who don't have a balance or are in debt? That's, I'm assuming since we have.
Always it's.
So that comes to be, but I just wanted to double check. Thank you very much.
And we've also been lucky lately. We've had some people donating good chunks of money in the past couple of years to help cover that debt.
So it's like clear in my mind, when we're talking about the bad debt and we're saying follow them after nothing gets reported to the credit bureau and it doesn't affect your credit score or anything like that.
Any other questions about that?
I'll just, those last couple of parts on the school meal program, I'm, I'm eyeing that policy. We added that in last year in order to be able to be eligible for the free lunch program. You remember that was one of the first updates that Trudy sent us. So those were the two, the diluent meal debt and then the elimination of lunch shaming. Those were the two sections that were required in order for us to be eligible for the new program this year. So that's why you said that September eighteenth of twenty twenty-three, we adopted that right after we adopted all these policies.
I was just going to mention, when, after we changed this, we had all the components we needed to send it to the state and we received a grant for just over thirty-five thousand dollars. I need to write out all our bad debt at that point, student debt, lunch debt.
Thank you. Anything else? Next is fifty-seven oh eight, do you have resuscitate orders? Melissa, I believe you have something?
I do. So I was reading through the, the not resuscitate orders portion of the policy and really being mindful of the staff who may be involved with. It never happens, but I'm not sure if it goes into the policy or, or not, but I think it's connected to the wellness. Like, is the wellness plan your staff who may be involved in a D N R for a student? Because that to me could be traumatic. I'd rather be proactive about it than reactive to a situation like that. So I just wondered if, like, where that could go.
Sure. I, I, you know, to less than our knowledge, I'm not aware of us using any sort of policy like this. So we could look for a spot in the policy where we could note that additional support we provided to any staff members. I would think minimally we would certainly refer them to our Kersola's program. We could probably work with Print Town also to provide additional support for them. I don't know, I just read this and you thought there was a spot that might sit nicely or plug something in?
I didn't, because I wasn't sure if that'd be a goal of like the wellness group that we just talked about, or if it would be outlined right in the D N R policy part. So I didn't direct anything specific for it.
I wonder if, if you look at the policy, the third paragraph from the end, where it says the superintendent or his knees operates to consult legal counsel. Staff members who participate or who are involved with the D N R plan, maybe we could add something there, will be entitled to additional support services through Print Town or Niners or something like that.
I have some thought of that too. I really liked that Melissa brought up. Without making it too open ended. There could be other situations, besides just this, that might require a similar response. So that'd be my only thought about with the wellness. Not sure exactly, you know, if it fit there, could it be a little broader? I think there was some other dramatic type of things, but also trying to be specific enough that it's not.
Let me go back through in the policy fifty-seven oh seven and see if there's a spot where we could add a sentence regarding some wellness support for staff. That, is there really a general wellness support? Any other questions on that policy?
Fifty-seven oh nine, enforcement and bed bugs. Nothing there, but going to fifty-seven ten, student suicide prevention. We'll start with Tim, but we also.
So my comment is regarding, should students be considered a required reporter? So should we have some statement in there where if a student, high school student who hears should have the obligation to report to someone that they know of, someone that may be considering suicide?
I, I don't know that there's a legal standard that would require us to have a minor report on another minor. I think we do a lot to encourage students. We talk about okay to say, we talk about finding a trusted adult. That's a foundation of our suicide prevention program is reporting that to a trusted adult. But to require that a minor report it, I can ask the question of Trudy, but I, I'm not sure that they, a minor wouldn't have that same legal obligation that a certain staff member would, that a professional would, that an administrator would. There's certainly a higher level of legal obligation at that point.
Is it a question?
Yeah, yeah. I can ask Trudy.
Of the, of the process, because they're often the ones that probably know, that unusual for them to know first. So again, but you're okay to say in other programs we have placed help with that, actively the avenues of them making. And then probably talk about the health classes too, right? Taking care of other children.
Would you like to go next?
I, I mean, I think that my concerns got addressed. I know that our job is not implementation, it's creating policy, but I, I can't even imagine what enforcement would look like of a policy like that. And I, I agree that mandatory, I mean, it's a fact that mandatory reporters, something that we can't just declare that students are mandatory reporters in a legal sense.
Melissa, your next, if you.
This was related to a comment that Jessica had raised to that. When I read that one for Jessica.
Sure, I just wanted to, do we want to somewhere in this policy ensure that students are taught to recognize other students in crisis and how to report? Which, as Jennifer has already said, this happens. I'm just wondering if we want to make a policy.
So I hope this will help clarify that. She just said, like, are my comments fine? I think we answered this, but is okay to say equipped with an option for students to report suicidal ideation of other students or even staff?
A hundred percent. I would say that the, the lion's share of the reports that I get from okay to say are a concerned friend reporting that another friend has made concerning statements or posted something on social media or that kind of thing. That, that I feel like is the majority of our okay to say reports. It's about self harm more than threats of violence.
So then, this is related to the two resources they shared underneath, which I'll go over here in a second. What you mentioned, the suicide prevention program, is that like a health class curriculum or is that posted somewhere?
It's not a health class curriculum. It is a program that our counselors do in, in the high school. And that they send information on to parents so that they're aware when next nap they need. And I can add more information shared with you, the program that they use. I believe it's called S O S, it's signs of suicides. Is that the program?
Good to know. Just, I don't know, I'm going to have to take a look from their professional perspective, but I put a couple of trainings in here from Samsung. This license abuse, mental health service administration, which is federal department for folks fifteen years and older. And that trains people on how to identify the often missigns of suicide in just regular conversation. And then the second one is for assist and it's training for folks sixteen and older. So, the word for it, I just got those in there.
Any other questions on that one? Fifty-seven twelve, compassion awareness? Nothing there. And also nothing at fifty-seven thirteen, immunizations and communicable seizures.
And I will say for both of those last two policies, for what it's worth, I think with the help of Deputy Lee, we are really doing a wonderful job in those areas. I mean, the reports that we get when a student has a head injury at school are very detailed, very consistent from building to building. I mean, I see all of the building reports and it's really, she's really created a great process for us, so. Thank you for that. We'll keep working on it. And next on, on my report, we have the sex education advisory board bylaws. I don't know, Tim, Kate, who am I turning this over to? Welcome, Kate.
Hello. Good to see you all. Thank you for what you do. It's hard work. Policies are thrilling. So I'm going to speak to you tonight and then Christina Hug was hoping to be the second person to speak to you. She's actually in Florida. So she started, she's not here to address you, but Mr. Hicks is actually going to help me. So I just have the very basic review of what the S A V did this year for you. And then Mr. Hicks will speak specifically to some of the things that we addressed in our last meeting around the bylaws. So this year's S A V was actually sixteen voting members. That included three healthcare professionals, three clergy, six educators, some who are also parents, but under the S A V's parameters of the state educator Trump's parent in most situations. We also had four parents only. They were just on the S A V because they are parents in our district. We also have all of our health professionals and two of our clergy members who are parents as well. So just to give you kind of a synopsis of what the group looked like this year, we had seven meetings this year. The bylaws, of course, were a gigantic focus of what we were doing and looking at. I was even here earlier this year to speak to you about that. I had Trudy review of those and your approval of those. But some of the other things that we did this year, we refreshed and rolled out the parent survey in time for conferences in the fall. Your S A V has been pretty consistent over the nine years that I've served there and even before that, of kind of doing it every other year or every third year, survey of the community. We actually received three hundred and seventy-two responses to that survey. It was lower than we had hoped and we never worked really hard with administration and all of the buildings to really communicate well what we were trying to do. It was available in handwritten form. People didn't have to access it online. They could get to it from several different ways. There were links in newsletters. We did a lot to try to reach them. So that was a little disappointing to not, we really wanted to get to kind of the seven hundred mark in the parent count. We were specifically addressing parents. That was maybe what we were looking for this time, whereas other years we had kind of given parameters for community members and students. The group kind of said, maybe it would be good this year to say, parents, will you respond? And so we, we really asked them to be parents and there was a spot for them to respond in that way. We lined the content up on the survey to match the state's A through K curriculum standards in sex education. Both because we were trying to simplify it. The previous survey was very broad and just gave tons of information. And also because that makes sense, right? If that's about the state requiring in sex education, it'd be nice if the things we're asking the parents to respond to aligned with that. Two of those in particular were of great interest to the S A V this year and we did a ton of discussing around them. I'm going to repeat that to you exactly, just to let them know what they were. One was sexual orientation and identity and it said in the survey, defines terms associated with sexual orientation and identity, explains dimensions of sexual orientation, including attraction, behavior, identity, as well as distinguish it from gender identity and gender expression. Emphasizes the importance of treating all students with respect regardless of their sexual orientation. And so if you did not see the survey, just so you know, the way it was phrased to the respondents was to please respond at the grade level they should first be taught. And there was some feedback on the survey, people who were confused, we like skipped grades, we did that. And there was some feedback on the survey, people who were confused, we like skipped grades, we did that intentionally action. We asked them only about grades where we are currently teaching sex education. So like we skipped eight for instance, and they were like, there's a B grade. It was not on purpose. With this one in particular, 166 parents responded that it should be taught, that idea of sexual orientation and identity, as I just defined it, should be taught first at fourth or fifth grade level. There were also 114 parents who said this shouldn't be taught at any level. And there were parents who responded in between those two as well. So maybe it was sixth grade, maybe it was seventh grade, maybe it was ninth grade. We also looked closely at the SEAB level about gender. And that one said in the survey, explains dimensions of gender, including ones by the identity and expression, such as gender at birth, gender identity, gender expression, and teaches that gender is a spectrum, discusses the influence of gender stereotypes on all students, emphasizes the importance of treating all students with respect regardless of their gender identity and gender expression. On this one, 199 parents, when you combine the two, said that this should first be taught at fourth or fifth grade. And 127 parents said this should not be taught at any level in the district. And again, there were responses between those. If you have not seen these results, Linda and I discussed probably 10 days ago now, trying to get these results up on the website so that the district at large can get to them and take a look at them. But I especially encourage you all to see those results. And like Tim said to the SEAB, and I think this is wise, it tells us something, it doesn't tell us everything, right? Especially because our responses were not at the level that we hoped they would be. So, you know, take it for what you will. But your SEAB did take those things and made some decisions around what might be our SEAB parameters as we look at curriculum, because one of the other things that was on our agenda this year was grade four, five, and six curriculum. We looked at it at length, we actually explored options through our RESD contacts. We looked at a local nonprofits option that's being taught nearby schools at the puberty level. We asked the teachers for their inputs, of course. And especially at the sixth grade level, I would say there is contentment with what we are currently offering through puberty, the wonder years. And the SEAB again kind of dissected each of those gender identity and sexual orientation issues, grade four, grade five, and grade six, and took some action on each one of those. Those are in our minutes, if you'd like to review them. So ultimately, we wrapped up with that seventh meeting in May and have some recommendations for you and around the bylaws. So I will remain nearby, so if you have questions after you hear from Mr. Hicks, we both have to answer for you.
Good evening. I'm back from their bases up here. I'm Josh Hicks, this is my 26th year at the district, and it's my second year on the sex advisory board. I serve as both a parent and educator. And the case I'm employing for Christina Hug, so I'm presenting her information that she had here. First, we are bringing forward amendments both in the May 20th meeting for Christina Hug to remain as sex advisory board co-chair for the upcoming 2024, excuse me, Twitter, as well as our recommendation for Sean Larson to be co-chair, holding the title of district sex education supervisor to Mount Pleasant Schools Sex Advisory Board. On a separate topic, we are bringing forward two requests for amendment to the recently approved bylaws from you as the school board, and they are the ones I see on the screen there that you all have. To begin, on February 8th, 2024, with an official quorum, we voted with a seven to three super majority for official recommendation of the bylaws to have up to two students as non-voting members of our sex advisory board. We appointed a subcommittee, including both co-chairs, school board liaison, Mr. Orger, a parent member with a sense of bylaw experience and knowledge, as well as a district employee that works with elementary students. Our decision on February 8th came after multiple hours of meetings by the bylaws committee, as well as our group as a whole. Prior to this vote, our current student representatives expressed valuable input regarding student representatives as voting members of our group. Specifically, these students both expressed their sincere gratitude to our collaborative effort, our collective board for always asking their input and putting a view into consideration in meetings. Ultimately, our student representatives both expressed that it was not a necessary component of the bylaws and requirements for students to be voting members. And they felt the voices were accurately heard and have taken into consideration the voting decisions of our members as a whole. On May 20th, Mr. Orger, our school board liaison, presented to us the approved and revised bylaws, which included students as voting members. There was a major concern felt by both members, by many members, that the commitment, time, and research that was put into our recommendations for the bylaws, specifically regarding students being voting members, was not taken into consideration. We wanted to express that we value the school board's input and overall goals to empower student voices. As a group, we want to empower student voices as well, but are in disagreement with the board's decision regarding appropriate method to empower our students by placing them as voting members. We want to ensure that the parents and community members, students, and school personnel from understanding of our recommendation as the sex advisory board, and that is to have up to two student representatives as ex officio non-voting members. During the May 20th meeting, the following summarized concerns expressed by our members. And these are not all, these are just a few. First was a concern regarding majority and development. Regarding the majority development, a level of students to potentially decide curriculum, our group as a whole is diverse with a multitude of experience. And agrees, given students a vote could undermine the credibility of our group in the high school public. Second, students could potentially have one-third of the total vote on a quorum this month. Third, the overturning of votes to have students as ex officio non-voting members seems to be a vote of incompetence and abilities and competency of the sex advisory board. Fourth, a majority of our current student applicants are entering 11th grade and under the age of 18. Now and in the future, we would be elevating minors to a level of equal representation of adults. Finally, students do not get a vote on the PSD committee, which still for the curriculum matters likewise. A majority of our group feels that it would also be inappropriate to give students a vote on curriculum recommendations for sex ed content in this district. Our C board has put together a letter that each of yours received regarding requests, which I already mentioned. Of the two amendments we are proposing, the more pressing concern is that bylaws will be out of compliance by taking on another parent and two students as voting members. The law requires the board to be composed of parents, clergy, community health officials, teachers, and students. The parents must be a majority in the group and not employed by any K-12 district. Our current arrangement as terms are ended and some members chosen not to continue means that we are out of compliance. Many of our district personnel are also parents, myself included. However, the state law is specific that they count as educators slash employees in the school district instead of parents. This means that the parent ratio is not complying to state law requirements since currently parents and district personnel are equal. When posting that open position, we consider this issue and do as a minimum requirement that it be a parent, ideally a community health professional that fills this vacant position. In closing, as represented by a majority vote in the sex advisory board, we respectfully request the two previously mentioned amendments to the bylaws be considered. We appreciate your time and consideration as matter to report with these amendments. Thanks.
Thank you.
And we have any comments?
Yes.
Can I get kind of a listener overview a little bit for the public? So there's many things in the bylaws, this is just the one component that there, there's the question. So it's not over the three pages of the bylaw that we're looking at, we're just looking at these small components that they've just helped clarify that the bylaws were not just student representation. There was many things in the bylaws that we all have taught. I just wanted to help clarify that just a little bit.
Just would you mind if I ask, there are my questions first? So I will admit that when I read that letter, it was pretty confusing. And so like one of my hobbies is like pulling up policy and law and taking a look to see what the interpretation was. And what you were talking about, like the educator trumps the parent and so on, I don't see that written in the law. And then there was another comment in the letter that mentioned it's not state law in the sex advisory board, which also, section 380.1507 of the Michigan compiled laws, section 15075 specifically states what the composition of the sex education advisory board will consist of. So the part that I'm getting a little bit turned around on is, and this is straight from that website, this is what it says, at least half of the members of the sex education advisory board shall be parents who have a child attending a school operated by the district. Half of them will be. So what is the, the letter that we got, so 11? Tonight I heard 16. When I was compiling this, I was like, okay, half of 11, five and a half, let's just say it's six. So we have six. And then the next part says, and a majority of these parent members shall be individuals who are not employed by the school district. A majority of the parent members, so half of the parent members, there's six. Majority of those six have to be parents, which is four. According to the list that was submitted, there are plenty more than four parents only of that majority, 50% parents. So I'm kind of confused about how we're saying that one trumps the other, or that we're not compliant with the law. Just reading the law itself, I went to the MBD site, if you won't, maybe it says something different and maybe it's a little bit confusing. So I went to the MBD site and it says exactly what was stated in the law. So there's that part. Shall is also like shall include pupils in school districts. I know there's not a question about if parents will be, or if students will be involved or not. It's how they're involved, I think is the question. But there isn't a choice on having students involved or not. So I think that that's a good point of clarification for all the board members that were going through this discussion. So those are the two clarifying things. Again, I went to what was provided for us, and then there are people who aren't identified as parents in the list, because there was that understanding that parents are employees trump parents, which according to what I write is not the case. So I don't even know if that list is accurate as far as parent representation is concerned. So those are my initial thoughts on the letter and really trying to figure out and get to some factual information. An interpretation of what we think it says, but going through the actual law and making sure that the decisions that we're making do indeed follow what is outlined in state law. Thank you.
I'd like to build upon some of the things that Melissa said in reference to the language of the law. In the letter, there's a reference to, I believe it mentions that there has to be a majority, a majority of the people on the sex advisory board acting as parents. That's incorrect, it has to be at least half, at least half is not a majority. Also, this is something we talked about when we unanimously voted to approve the bylaws with our amendments. The language about students in the law is the board of a school district shall include pupils of the school district, educators, local clergy, and community health professionals on the sex education advisory board. That is all in the same sentence. We are saying that all the other people there except for the students have a vote. I don't understand why students have a vote. And finally, in terms of the numbers, is somebody correct with my wrong? Like I believe that what we asked, what we voted to approve was language that said there has to be one voting student on the sex advisory board. There could be as many as two, and the second would be ex officio. There is no circumstance in which the students, the students are going to be one-third of the vote, even if there's just a pair.
Should we ask a follow-up question? I mean, have you responded to that or should we?
It doesn't matter. I just had a question about the open position, if that had been filled.
It hasn't been officially filled, no, because it'll come to you to be officially approved. We did receive applications for it. As well as student applications, we have those too. And we just asked them to hold please while we figure out what's going on, essentially.
I clarified a couple of things. The 16 is what was on the committee advisory board prior to our bylaws. The bylaws narrowed that down to 11. That's why you get the definition to be the 16 to 11. 16 were all this past year, the bylaws seemed in place, and upon the recommendation of the sex advisory board, it went down to 11. And two, the bylaws were reviewed by Tru prior to our approval. And so they reviewed everything in the language that was in that, and they, their statement was in that lines with what were required. Oh, the laws that were required to follow are reflected in that.
I'm sorry, Kate, but I just need to say again, and I said this a few times now. I know that Tru approved that language, but I, based on my conversations with Michigan Association of School Boards and the Michigan Department of Education, we are legally required to have a voting student on the sex advisory board. So I don't, I mean, we've got competing legal theories here.
And that's kind of a problem, I mean, you all have to get to the bottom of that. And I think of Melissa's points about the half parents, that could also be clarified with legal counsel, because I think it is confusing. It can be interpreted both ways, and so what is the correct interpretation? What is the law really? Because your SEAB is interpreting it differently than you are interpreting it tonight. Other things to address, it was not communicated to your SEAB in May that the decision and change that you all made to the bylaws was one voting student with a second ex officio. That was not communicated, I don't, I don't know.
I don't think that language is currently given, and it's definitely approved.
So that was something that, if that was misaddressed, it was because we had misinformation. And if it were two voting students and the quorum is six in a group of 11, then it would be up to a third of the vote, and that definitely was something that was concerning to your SEAB.
Is it possible, Jessica, for the correspondence of you in that lawyer, that we could have a forward, you know, that we could read that as well, just to see what, you know, the wording? I mean, I'm not.
I have to, I have to ask the people with whom I corresponded, how does it feel about that? But I don't see a possibility.
Just so we could all.
Yeah, that makes sense. Jennifer, did we have a copy of, I couldn't find the updated bylaws?
Yeah, I just pulled them off out of, I mean, you have access in your board drive to archive meetings, and so I just went back to the April 15th meeting, that's what I pull up here are the archive. So if we look at article F.
Yeah, I was able to find the draft, I wasn't able to find a marked up version with our changes that we put on.
This is the.
Marked up.
No, it's okay, it's okay. I feel like Tim, Melissa, they're finalized version after this.
I'm just thinking how I can share it with everybody.
So the language here says, as per our statement in Michigan, at least one, but no more than two pupils of Mount Pleasant Public Schools. And then. I guess I don't know if there is specific language here that says, I guess, members. It's under section three, which is ex officio members. Item C was student members, and that's where we struck that sentence.
So on here, on the final version under article F, it just says, F and C, student members. Up to two high school students may be appointed. So on here, on the final version under article F, it just says, F and C, student members, up to two high school students may be appointed to the sex advisory board. That is under the section of types of members, official and ex officio. So it is, section one is the S A B shall consist of members that reflect the community it serves while maintaining all state and Michigan requirements. Section two, official members, all official members of sex advisory boards and members who have voting rights on the S A B. That the non-parent, that we were, the non-Mountain Public School members, which are parents. In a sense, as required by the state of Michigan, at least one half of the membership of the S A B must be parents who have a student attending a program operated by the Mount Pleasant Public Schools. And a majority of these parent members shall be individuals who are not employed by any K twelve district. Section two says, as required by state of Michigan, at least one health professional shall be a member of the S A B and S A B. Three is, as required by state of Michigan, at least one local clergy shall be a member of S A B. Mount Pleasant Public Schools Board of Education, sorry, that's the pointer, scroll down. Section B states, Mount Pleasant Public School members, one, Mount Pleasant Public School Health Educator. Two, as required by the state of Michigan, Mount Pleasant Public School Sexual Educator Supervisor. And then section C says, student members, up to two high school students may be appointed by, to the S A B. And then section three goes to help of the ex officio members, administrative and the board liaison, and then the recording secretary. So there's nothing to say, one of these, and go one of these students. I will think of how I can get this to everybody today.
Yeah, I think in regards to the contradictory legal advice, I mean, we can certainly seek more legal guidance. The legal advice that TRU gave us as they were reviewing this process was that it was up to us whether students had a vote or not. Jessica received different legal advice from Michigan Association of School Board that said that students must, was it must or shall? Do you remember what was it used?
I believe the word that was in the email was shall, based on telephone conversations with that lawyer and with Michigan Department of Education. It was must.
And so one of the other recommendations from the S A B is also update for the bylaws that would make it clear that a quorum would consist of a reflective group, right, that you would have that professional present, the clergy present, maybe one student, two to three parents, in your six, because if your group stays eleven, you could require that the quorum be reflective of what the state requires. So that students were one third, so that was the other recommendation we were making to you. And there was language in that letter on that idea as well.
Great, talk about to get clarity, you know, on some of those things.
The note's a matter of clarification regarding the student vote, the parents creating half or a majority, and then the educator trumping the parent, those are the three main areas of legal clarification. We just had to send this conversation to me, read that.
Are we helpful? I just wanted to say, too, as I'm looking at our educational governance agreements, I think we have an opportunity here, you know, several of these things are being addressed. Commitment to continuous growth, as we're all learning, you know, through this process, community engagement. But I think one thing that struck me as I'm just listening is all the work that's gone into this process from volunteers that are invested. So we can all appreciate that. And just having an opportunity to honor that work, when they hear, they feel like it's a new confidence. That pricks my heart, because as we hear from lots of different groups, I think our practice has been to lean into their recommendations. And so I just want to be sure that as we're being equitable, as we look at these, that we're approaching this in that similar way. I mean, I don't know if it, yeah, we're empowering excellence, you know, with students. You know, we talked about maybe having a student representative on the board or some different other committees. And so I think also just taking that into consideration of, I think we'll all, with the strategic plan and all that, be looking at how that flashes out. What does that look like? And I just wonder if there's, you know, we probably all have different definitions of what that could look like. So I think it's a really important part of the process, because it will probably shape other decisions with students as well. But, yeah, I just think you have an opportunity to kind of relook at it and get some of those questions answered. And also, I'm in the hard work in the process, because there's a lot of work that's been done, all the meetings and.
Any other questions for me, Jessica? Thank you so much.
Just one last thing, I just, I don't remember if I, I wanted to thank Heather Prewell for being here tonight. In Kevin's place, she will cover for Ginger when she has lunch, we just appreciate you spending some time with us.
Next, that brings us to requested financial reports. Yes, I have, sorry, just trying to find my tabs. I have created the financial reports for the month ending May, comparing five years nineteen twenty through twenty-three, twenty-four. That sounds really weird, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. This is for general fund and our special service funds, revenue and expenditure, comparing budget to actual expenditures. For general fund, you can see we're writing our line on our budget, our revenue and expenditures across all years. It makes sense if our expenditures are getting higher towards the end of the by year, because we have many more grants on our books that are weighted by this. And funding usually comes in, it's not interested. Our special service funds are all over the place, and this is purely the nature of these funds. These are all self-sustaining funds, so they all pay for themselves. So whether revenue time on here, and expenditures are low next year, they always pay for themselves. So at the end of the year, by the line, they all sees out either to zero, or they carry a funding out, so they can spend it to next fiscal year. For the treasurer's report for general fund, on April thirtieth, we had a cash balance of ten point nine million dollars. We had receipts in the month of May of four point eight million, and dispersments of seven million. That brings us a balance on May thirty-first of eight point seven million dollars. For our debt retirement fund, on April thirtieth, we had a cash balance of six hundred and fourteen thousand, and interest income of eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars, and no dispersments per month. That brings us a balance on May thirty-first of six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And for our capital project funds, on April thirtieth, we had ten point seven million. We actually had sold series two of our bonds in May, so we had thirteen point five million dollars of income. For the month of May, it's first one's of five hundred and seventeen thousand. So that raises something else on May thirty-first with twenty-three point seven million dollars. Just in time to start those summer projects up. Is that okay? Thank you very much. Any questions? Next, that brings us to correspondence, at this point, there hasn't been any. Next, we come to the citizens' request to address a board on any agenda or non-agenda items. We do not have anybody who has written that they would like to address the board tonight, so that brings us to the consent agenda. So going on that, we have, starting off with consent items for the approval of the minutes from May twenty twenty-four for the regular meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then next comes to the approval of the bills, and that is in the sum of four million, two hundred, five thousand, eight hundred, forty dollars and nine cents. Is there a motion to approve the bills? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that passes, thank you. That next brings us in to the S A B bylaws, however, I think we, I'm not sure what we, I know we had talked about looking into those further. Is there anything else we need to do for that during business tonight?
I just make some clarifications, if that could. So in general, the idea would be is if we remain with our current bylaws, if that is the case, then we will, they are, we would need to potentially increase by one board member instead of the eleven, it would be twelve. Problem also being an even number, which was part of the conversation. I just want to kind of, kind of piece it together a little bit. That is with what they are recommending, the sex advisory board recommendation is to, if we keep students as a voting member, that we probably should increase the board composition by one person.
Because it's not, in the bylaws.
That's what they're recommending, whether it's right or wrong, I just wanted to, because if we don't, if we remove the students as a voting member, the need in their recommendation wouldn't be to increase the number of the board members voting.
I mean, there are other ways we could address the.
And I'm sorry to clarify, but they're trying to recommend to us.
Yeah, I mean, there's, we're not obligated to stick with the sex advisory board as it currently exists. But, yeah, we wanted to, that would be twelve members, with students and the open parent position.
There's a lot in it, so I just wanted to kind of, kind of show you where the, the conversation from their perspective needs to be addressed, or how they feel it. Those are the tie bar things, the balancing things that we do.
So at this point, we, based on where we are in the meeting, we either need to make a motion to approve the recommendation that was submitted to us by the sex advisory board. We can table the idea, we can do nothing, and we just move on to the next agenda item. But the fact that it's under new business means that the board needs to do something if we're going to move the conversation forward this evening.
And just to clarify, the ones that we approved are still the standing bylaws at this point.
I moved that we table it while we look for more information.
Second, that.
Okay, I just had my question, but there's, did we determine that there is just one voting student, but two on? Clarify that.
I think, based on what Tim read, that's not included. I do believe that was part of the conversation that evening, but I don't think that that's in that final document that Tim has shared. So that could be another point of research and clarification over the next month.
How I view, bring that understanding is, you could have up to two students, and they would both be voting if they were two students.
That's what I thought we had said, but that brings, you know, that's a potential compromise, right?
I mean, I honestly, I mean, that's what's in my notes from that meeting, that we're married, so. Anyway, it's obviously a point of new clarification.
So the board should vote, and the motion became the second.
So as, as now the motion is to table, the motion is the second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
So what should we do, is that's a, just close to majority? So with majority, then we will table it until the next meeting. With some research to be done, so we can come at a quick more information. Okay, next, that moves into E, which is the budget amendment, which is a roll call vote.
Who, yes?
Oh, wait, first we have to, is there a motion, yes? Is there a motion for the budget amendment that was presented tonight?
I move that we accept this budget amendment.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay.
Now, Jessica, German, yes?
Amy, yes?
Isaac, yes.
Nathan Thompson, yes.
Katie Reed, yes.
Tim Wodder, yes.
All right, and that passes, thank you. And then next is the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget, which is also a roll call vote, however, first we need to have a motion for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget to approve that.
Would that we set the recommendation for the twenty-four, twenty-five vote's budget?
All right, cool.
Jessica, German, yes.
Amy, yes?
Isaac, yes.
Nathan Thompson, yes.
Katie Reed, yes.
Tim Wodder, yes.
Thank you, and that passes. Next is the twenty twenty-four tax rate request.
Yes, do you have any packets, two very official uniforms for the tax rate request, this is something I bring you every year at this time. This is voter approved bond mortgages. Each year, we work with our financial advisors and our bond council to set how much debt mileage we need to levy for that year to cover principal and interest payments for all of our debts. So this is all already been voter approved. We just can change the mileage we're levying for these debts each year based on what we have to pay, the upcoming bills. This year, we're recommending a total of four point eight eight debt miles. This is spread out over four different debt managers, as I mentioned earlier. We did just sell series two of the voter approved November twenty-one bond. So that is a new payment included in this, this has been increased from last year's debt mileage of point nine mils. Now, point nine mils, if you have taxable value, homestead taxable value of fifty thousand dollars, that point nine mileage increase equates to forty-five dollar increase for the year. So it is an increase, it is a small increase, but it's been recommended from our financial advisor, so we do this this year to help cover the four different debt series that we're still paying off. With that being said, I said we do, we revisit this every year, we do this every year, we do have one of these four debts dropping off after the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. So it will look better going forward. So with that, on these debt managers, there's also a total of six mils on commercial personal property, a total of eighteen mils on all operating property, on all other property for operations, that's the most we're allowed to levy for operations, so these mils. It's including a one point eight mil for the two thousand sixteen debt, point six four mils for the twenty twenty debt, one point one mil for the twenty twenty-two debt, and one point three four mils for the twenty twenty-four debt. There are two forms, because in the city of Mount Pleasant, only we levy half of our taxes in the summer and half in the winter. So we need one form that splits that out for the July one levy and the December one levy. The other form for our county and all their township levies one hundred percent of their debt in the winter. So that's why there's two different forms. So I'm asking you to approve these forms, recommend that bag our financial advisor and our bond council to levy your debt for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year.
Is there a motion?
Nice question. So just to help clarify, to give us some language to help us have, describe this, what's happening. So are we still within, so each one of these bonds' millages, let me just say, each one of the millages that we asked for was for dollars or a number of mils?
For dollars, so let's use, let's use the November twenty-one bond, the most recent one that we have. The voters approved forty-five point nine million dollar bond to be sold in several series. So the first series that we sold was twenty-four million dollars. Just in May, we sold series two for thirteen million dollars. So the voters already approved us to sell the whole forty-five point nine million dollars that we're just doing it in sections. So they approved the five dollar amount, and then that gives us the authority every year to set the debt mileage amount, just enough to pay for that year's worth of principal and interest payments. And then we revisit it again next year, and do the same thing all over.
Thank you, so then?
You're welcome.
I'm looking at the form, that legal form, so the total of the non, the millages that are not, that are not homestead, that's the eighteen of the homestead ones that's set by law, that's all the others are a total of all of the villages that we currently are levying based on all of the bonds that we've been elected, that voted on to approve the use of those dollars, correct?
Correct.
And in that, each one of those, that point nine percent is dispersed among all of them? Or is it just like on the new twenty-four debt?
It is dispersments all of them. Each year, the percentage, the debt mileage that we'll change at every single one based on, the principal's more this year, the interest is more, the payments aren't equal every single year. So we look at all four currently, all four debts that we have. So we look at all four currently, all four debts that we have, what we owe on them, and then the total amounts divvy up into each one based on how much we need to cover that payment.
And is it just the amount of debt, or is it also the amount of revenue that is generated on those mils, which is determined on property values? So example, are property values dropping and we're bringing on a new debt mode? Or is it just the new debt mode coming online?
This is just the new debt mode coming online, but the total taxable value is used in the calculation that our financial advisors help with presents, way to be out of that level of investment.
So that's the property values of non-homestead property values, right?
Yes, yeah.
Or no, actually, every property debt.
It'd be for debt, it's a, it's everything.
Right, for debt.
The 18 mils operating is on non.
Non. So just to clarify my mind, we're having a .9% increase, which is primarily a reflection of bringing on the new debt, of which was part of a overall reaching dollar amount approval that occurred two years ago now, year, two years ago?
Three years, 21.
In 21?
Correct.
And then, and next year, and this will also be slightly different, knowing that one of them, the 0.6, probably will fall off because that debt is, you know.
Correct. As long as taxable values continue on the line and our order increase, potentially, this should go back down with, this is least worth it to say that.
Okay, thank you for helping clarify, giving us some language to be able to describe this.
Absolutely.
It is very, very complex, so. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there any cap to what it would be, or just is based on me?
I love where, if there's a cap. It's definitely just based on me. We work very hard. You know, our, our financial advisors ask for our current cash balance in those debt accounts. And then we look at the taxable value, and then we look at the upcoming payment. So it's, we never try to levy more.
That would be necessary.
Correct. So this is millions and millions of dollars worth of payments that we have this upcoming year. But if you remember for the May cash balance for our debt fund, we have $600,000 left. That's what's left over this year after we paid everything. That will go into next year to help with payments, but that's all taken into consideration.
This one ticked it for everyone. So the taxable value, everything's within Mount Pleasant Public School District, is just about $1.4 billion. With the non, with our homes removed from that, it is 645, 646 million dollars value. Which is out of this fancy form.
Are there any other questions? Is there a motion regarding the 2024 tax rate request?
I move to accept the recommendation for the 2024 tax rate determinations.
Seconded.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much for that. That does pass. Next is the food service contract. In your board back of this evening, you have a final food contract. It was approved by the Michigan Department of Education for the Mount Pleasant Public Schools contract with Southwest Food Service Excellence for our food service management program. As you know, back in April, we began the RFP process. We met with four different organizations that we put it on our food service programs. And after an extensive process, we submitted the contract from Southwest Food Service Excellence to the Michigan Department of Education. We did receive their approval back on this contract on June 11th. So this evening, we're asking that you make a motion to approve the contract that is in your board packet. It is unique just to make sure that we're approving this contract for one year. It can revisit it up to four times after its initial approval, and then we go out for the bid process again. So this is a process that happens every five years. And maybe you just want to thank Linda Boyd and Chrissy Brennan especially for all of her work on this process. They were really instrumental in the process, and you can ginger for helping us prepare the RFP to get us rolling back in April. Are there any questions about the food service contract? Is there a motion to accept the food service contract with SFP as presented tonight?
Seconded.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that passes. Thank you again too for everyone that was in on that. Next is the Centric contract. In your board back of this evening, you have a contract for Centric Learning LLC. Centric Learning is the electronic platform that we use to provide curriculum in programs in the alternative education program that are housed at Oasis and also at A treatment. This evening, we're asking that you approve a one-year contract extension with Centric. If you remember, last year, we separated out a Wade contract. Wade provided staffing to the alternative education program, and Centric provided the curriculum. As we move forward into the next school year, we would like to be able to provide our own programs or our own staffing. But we still would like to have a virtual platform that will be the curriculum record. And we're asking that you approve this Centric learning for that. So one-year contract, it is a slightly reduced rate from what we've been paying this year, so that's good. And we'll continue to work on putting a structure in place for the alternative education program with our own employees moving forward. Are there any questions regarding this Centric contract? Is there a motion to approve that contract?
Seconded.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes. Thank you for the work that has gone into that. Next is the MMARA dissolution. Yes, so, so this is a new one for me. I've never had a dissolution before. But as you know, back in February, our community was asked to vote on an aquatic center. And that vote did not pass through the community. So the recreation authority that was pursuing the aquatic center was originally established by Mount Pleasant Public Schools, the city of Mount Pleasant, and Union Township. So in order to fully close that chapter, if you will, for the MMARA, we need each board to dissolve the rec authority. So you do have a recommendation in your board packet that goes through the background information of the rec authority, how it was established. It does say that a district report to with the defeat of the ballot proposal and no plans to revisit the feasibility of an aquatic center. The authority has requested that it be resolved. Per Article 16 of the Articles of Preparation, the dissolution of the authority proceeds as follows. The authority, the authority may be dissolved by the concurrent resolution of the governing body. When a majority of the participating municipalities, the authority, at such time with the dissolution. Prior to the dissolution of any authority, announced any indebtedness of the authority, including any bonds issued, shall be paid, no bonds were issued because of never approved. So if you go down to the resolution, we're asking that we approve the dissolution of the Michigan Recreation Aquatic Recreation Authority, and that all remaining funds will be equally distributed to Union Township, to the city of Mount Pleasant, and Mount Pleasant Public Schools. We did initially invest some funding into the rec authority to help with their legal fees and to help with their process for them to become a recognized authority by the state of Michigan. So there'll be a slight refund. I, I think it's right around $1,100 or $1,200. I think it can be in there to each entity. Yeah, $1,364.73 will be distributed to each board, or I'm sorry, each entity. Is there a motion to dissolve the Michigan Aquatic Recreation Authority?
Seconded.
I believe this is a roll call because of the resolution.
Jessica Derrick, yes.
Amy Vaughn, yes.
Isaac, yes. Nathan Thompson, yes.
Katie Reed, yes.
With much regret, yes.
Next, so that passes. Next is the MPEA tentative agreement. In your board back of this evening, you have a rather, rather lengthy tentative agreement with the Mount Pleasant Education Association. This is our teachers' association. This tentative agreement addresses several areas of the MPEA master agreement, including wages, insurance benefits, class sizes, the school day, scheduled lead programming, several, lots of different topics that we have bargained with there for, for the whole year. It does also include a full calendar for the 2024-2025 school year. Today, we just released sort of a snapshot of the calendar. But if the tentative agreement is approved this evening, we'll be able to release the full calendar for our community tomorrow. So we're asking again that you approve this tentative agreement. It was ratified by the members of the Mount Pleasant Education Association during the last week. Is there a motion for the approval of the MPEA tentative?
So. Can I make a comment? Thank you for working on this, everybody. This has been a long time coming. And thank you for sharing all the complex information. I mean, there's a lot of parts to this, and so keeping us informed all the way along is very helpful, thank you for all.
And, and we should recognize, our administration team is myself, Linda Boyd, Ginger Faber, Kim Bishop, Principal of Allos Elementary, and Lisa Davis, Assistant Principal of Allos Elementary. So it was a lot, a lot of time. We literally started in October and we finished up just about a week before MPEA was able to launch. And because it's a renovation, I think it's all involved.
Jessica Derrick, yes.
Amy Vaughn, yes.
Isaac, yes. Nathan Thompson, yes.
Katie Reed, yes.
Tim Wadler, yes.
And that passes. And that brings us to the new hire list.
We are excited to bring several new hires on board to Mount Pleasant Public Schools. We have Ann Brown as our teacher for Moyer Elementary. Ray Reeves, math teacher, Mount Pleasant Little School. Moonin Gilat, a GSRP lead teacher at Paulan Elementary. Megan King, our American Sign Language teacher at Malls High School. Cindy Mary, award-certified behavior analysis for the district. Ethan Knapp, English language arts at MBMS. Caitlin Trumbull, GSRP lead teacher at Paulan Elementary. And Lauren Luster, fourth grade teacher at Mary and Moyer Elementary.
Any other questions?
Jane, that's a lot of work. That's exciting. Usually this comes in August, is the last meeting before we get to track it.
We're getting cut off. Is there a motion to accept the new hires as presented here tonight?
Seconded.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And with that, welcome to the district. Wonderful. And so on that, we have the retirements.
Yes, our teacher retired, or honoring Dee Walter after 32 years with the district. She missed our big round earlier. I think she wanted to avoid all the, all the hubbub, but she told us shortly at the end of the meeting.
Is there a motion to accept the retirement of Dee Walter?
Salute.
Seconded.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for that many years for the district. That is a lot, and that one here. And that's then, that moves us to the resignation.
So we are sad to see a few folks leave the district this year. Caitlin Bellinger, Natalie Baldwin, Allison Lucrez, and Ashton Forco. There's them all, yes.
And are there any questions left out? Is there a motion to accept the resignations as presented?
Seconded.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And if that passes, we wish them the best on their next, in the next year. And that goes to new activity and non-request.
Yes, we have a few new requests for you for activity counts tonight. The first is for disc golf, wow, disc golf club, starting up at the high school. They actually have our year-received donations for this, so we're anxious to get it going, get that close to get started. We have one for the Hispanic Honor Society from up on the high school that they did to start up. And another one from the high school from the class of 2028.
Is there a motion to accept the counts presented tonight? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes, and we saw like some really great groups. So with that, we now come to the Board of Education discussion, an opportunity for any board member to discuss issues or concerns that they may have.
I'd like to thank everybody for, a good end of the year. Like, things were wonderful, a school year ended smoothly, and I hope all of our educators can get some recuperative time. And already, when Jen sends out her calendar, what's people forward to, she's got already next fall, gives the golf for us. So stop that. But thank you for everybody for all the hard work. I hope to take the August time to relax and to breathe.
Just want to applaud the district and everybody involved with the school, the summer meals program. I drove by on Wednesday and it was just hours just lined up and saw some social media posts of very happy families and children working that the summer. So for everybody that was involved in helping and making that decision in the community for participating, it's an excellent program. I also wanted to recognize the Segno Shaboa Kida tribe, and they're spreading dispersment of over $218,000 for grants. So thank you again to the tribe for supporting our schools.
So with that, I, I'm going to be adjourned.